Tonight, and again, I apologize for being fifteen minutes late starting, but let me just follow up and say, we just got our flu shot, several of us did. It doesn't take long, and it could really be a huge help, especially to senior citizens and those with other health concerns, so recommend it to you. We'll start our official agenda tonight, as we always do, with an invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Dr. Tim McCoy is here with us, and he'll come to the podium, and we have two students who'll stand behind him, and after Dr. McCoy is through with the invocation, they'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So would you please stand, as you are able, for the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance? Dr. McCoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commission members, and I hope you'll find at each one of your places tonight, a small token of our appreciation for your service to our community. It's a treatment on the Lord's Prayer, recently released, we hope you'll be blessed by. Let's pray together. Father in heaven, we bow our heads before you with gratitude for every blessing and every provision that you've bestowed upon us, our families, and our community. Lord, we acknowledge that every good gift comes from your sovereign hand, and we're thankful. Lord, we pray especially tonight, for our leaders, we pray that they would lead us with honesty and with integrity, we pray they would govern us with discretion and with skill. We pray, oh Lord, that you would guide our leaders to make decisions that promote peace, good order, personal responsibility, and the economic prosperity that would benefit all of our community. Heavenly Father, we pray that our leaders would govern in ways that assure, ensures equal protection under the law for all our citizens, and that protects all our cherished liberties, including our religious liberty. And Lord, I pray that you would help us all to have the humility to be guided by your word, the wisdom to honor your clear commands, and the courage to resist the corrupting spirit of our age. Lord, your word says righteousness exalts a nation, but sin is a reproach to any people. So please forgive us when we have chosen sinful ways and lead us to walk in paths of righteousness. Father, tonight I pray, in the name of your son, Jesus Christ, who died on the cross for our sins, so that all who repent and believe might have eternal life in him. It's in the name of the King of kings and the Lord of lords, the Lord Jesus, that I pray. Amen.
May you join us for the pledge. Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Dr. McCoy, thank you so much for being with us tonight, we appreciate it. Dr. McCoy has been the lead pastor at Ingleside Baptist Church nineteen eighty-nine, sir, and what great work you're doing out there, I'm telling you, it's just a wonderful thing. But in addition to that, Dr. McCoy has served as first vice president of Georgia Baptist Convention, and trustee of the International Mission Board of the Southern Baptist Convention, and is chairman of that board in two thousand and two thousand and one, I believe. So thank you for all that you do at Ingleside, thank you for what you do for our community, and thank you for what you do for the Baptist congregations all over. We appreciate you. Our Pledge of Allegiance tonight was led by two of our youth, Andrea and Nicole Spencer. Would you stand up, Andrea? Andrea Spencer, the daughter of Janet Dorn and Darren Burkett, she's a very involved as a member of the Young Ladies, Young Gentlemen of SMART, S-M-A-R-T, which is South Macon Arts Revitalization Technology, that's right, SMART, and I wish I was that smart. Where she serves as secretary, honor roll student at Appling Middle School, and is a member of the Future Business Leaders of America, also on the volleyball team in course, she's an ambassador for Appling Middle School at her church. Also, we've got Nala Linay Belgrave. Nala is here, she's a current member of SMART as well, Young Ladies and Young Gentlemen of SMART, active member and leader in the Chess Club, wow, Chess Club, the daughter of Rodney and India Belgrave, Nala attends Vinable Academy for the Arts, and is participating in ballet, drama, art, strings in the Honor Choir, very dedicated, honor fourth grade student, who enjoys going to movies, singing, dancing, and playing with friends. So to both of our young people, when we hear so much bad stuff about what's going on with young people this day and age, it's great to see such two outstanding young people come to be with us and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, and good luck to you. The next item on our agenda is approval of the minutes, and the minutes of our pre-commission meeting of September the eighteenth, and our regular commission meeting of September the eighth, have been prepared and distributed. Are there any changes or corrections? If not, can I get a motion to approve the minutes by Allen, second by Schlesinger? Further discussion here, none, all in favor of approval of the minutes? Signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the minutes are adopted. Next, we have an invited guest, and there is one invited guest, and Mayor Pro Tem, may I call on you, sir, to talk about our invited guest, either at your place or down at the podium, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commission. Can I ask Shalom Zone Representative Frank Austin to come up along with Dwayne Maxwell, please? We are, thank you, sir. Today, we're going to recognize a citizen, Dwayne Maxwell, and we've all heard the term nosy neighbor, but I don't think we'll call him a nosy neighbor, because he's a good neighbor. And we often hear in our communities about illegal dumping and those things that happen. And Mr. Maxwell observed illegal dumping, whether you put out mattresses, debris, or what have you. This time, it was in his own neighborhood, trees, huge trees, that his neighbor was having removed, and Mr. Maxwell began to observe this and notice that the company was not hauling the trees away, they were actually dumping them on the cities right away. He began to film them, take pictures, and he was upset, because he says, "I deserve to live in a neighborhood where they're not going to do this." So he would, above and beyond the call of duty, to not only record this, take photos, he called law enforcement, he waited, and it was his neighbor. And he reached out to, after doing this, he reached out to myself, this government body, he reached out to Shalom Zone, Mr. Austin, and he wanted something done. I, in essence, reached out to the county manager and had our solid waste director, and they went out and investigated, and cited not only the property owner, but the company, and made them go back and remove those trees. Now, our camera systems aren't working tonight, but we had photos and everything, but we are here just to recognize what we consider a good deed, and this is a certificate of appreciation from the Mayor and Commission to Dwayne Maxwell on behalf of Macon, Bill County. Thank you for your good deed and a job well done, back and around July seventeenth, twenty eighteen. Signed, Robert A. B. Rickert, on October second, twenty eighteen. And we want all citizens to take heed and do and become Dwayne Maxwells. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Maxwell, thank you very much, and Mayor Pro Tem, thank you very much for arranging that.
And Mr. Mayor, if we would like to hear briefly from our Shalom Zone personnel, and then Mr. Maxwell.
Good.
Thank you for the time, Mayor and Commissioner, and Mayor Pro Tem. When it comes to community involvement, I think it comes a time when enough is enough. I think it's our civic duty to stand for our community, and Mr. Maxwell reached out, and he's a shining example of what happens when you're sick and tired, and you stand up for your community. I believe that everybody deserves a cleaner and safer community, but we gotta take a stand, and we must work together. So thank you for this opportunity, and congratulations to you, Mr. Maxwell.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Tillman, he stayed with me the whole time, even though I know I might have got on his nerve, and I called him, but he told me, you know, be patient, he's working on it, and got the Bill County Sheriff involved in it, and it wasn't for him breathing some life over into my community, we definitely appreciate what you've done for us. We have a neighborhood watch, and I guess I'm one of the youngest ones on the house in my neighborhood, but they look up to me to do things, and I appreciate you for what you've done, give us some brevo over there in my neighborhood. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Maxwell. Next item on our agenda, public comments on agenda items, this is the opportunity that people have to talk about items that are on the agenda for action tonight, so that we hear you before we vote. Those that are here that want to talk about a non-agenda item will be heard later in the program, but as to agenda item comments, Mr. Verbin Weaver, Mr. Weaver, are you here? Mr. Weaver wants to talk to us about Sunday voting. Mr. Weaver, you're recognized for up to five minutes, thank you very much for being here, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I certainly wouldn't take five minutes. I just wanted to encourage the commissioners here to please just appropriate the funds necessary, we know where the money's going to go, it's going to go to the people who are going to work the polls for that day. It's also, well, pretty much the only function of any government to facilitate the exercise of rights, including the right to vote, so I think it would be appropriate, Commissioner Winn, I hope that you would change your position, mostly because you had no problem with us spending forty, I think forty thousand dollars for your special election, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver, we appreciate you being here, appreciate your comments. And for all others that wish to talk to us, please direct your comments to the chair. This is not a time for us to be able to respond to you, but to listen to you, so please address your comments to the chair. Next, Stanley Stewart wants to talk to us about the Little Richard House. Mr. Stewart, thank you very much for being here, sir, you're recognized for up to five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the Commission, and fellow Maconites, I'll be real quick, it won't take five minutes also. As we all know, last December, we had a real nice event for Richard over at the Craft Street location, and it was my understanding that there was an agreement between the state and the city in terms of taking care of that house. That house is not just for Little Richard, but it's also a resource center for Pleasant Hill. This day and age, when so many things are taking place in our community, you would think that all the things we can come to the table with to make our community better, we would do so. So the ninety-six thousand dollars and a hundred thousand dollars being asked for by the enhancement authority, I think it is, I hope you all will find it in your heart to pass that. I told Richard, I've been keeping, I'm Little Richard's cousin, by the way, on my father's side, my mom's cousin's Richard Scotty, who smashed New Kids on the Block and Mark Wahlberg, but I've been keeping Richard abreast of things, letting him know how things are working out, and he wasn't very happy about it, he says, "Do they know that I gave fifty thousand dollars to the city the last time I gave a concert here?" I said, "Yeah, I think they probably know all that," but I'm going to yield a few minutes of my time, and I'm going to try to get him on the telephone to let him speak directly to you, and let you know how he feels about the house. Hope he answers the phone.
Me too.
But it does mean a lot to the community, overall. Y'all have to excuse my flip phone. Cousin Richard, how you doing? Listen, I've got you on speaker, I'm in the, what you would know as the City Hall chambers, in front of the mayor, the entire members of the Commission, and across segment of the city of Macon. And I was talking about your boyhood home over there, and we all are very excited about it. As you know, you and I have talked privately about the fact that what we're going to do to try to cement your legacy here in the city, as far as a foundation, as far as a museum, but I wanted you to say just a few words about what that boyhood home meant to you, and more importantly, what Pleasant Hill itself meant to you, if you don't mind, please, sir. Everybody can hear you too, so please.
Well, I was raised in Pleasant Hill, you know, that's where I'm from. We first lived on Willa Street, then moved from Willa Street to Jefferson Street, then moved from there to Fifth Avenue where the house is. And I love Macon, that's where I talk about it all the time.
Greatest ambassador I ever had.
That's where I'm one of the few artists that talks about it all the time. I let everybody know that's where I'm from, you understand me?
Yes, sir.
And I love Macon, I think everybody loves it, it's a beautiful place, it's nice, very nice people, and I hope that whatever they're doing, I hope it worked out good for the home to be there for everybody to enjoy.
Yes, sir.
And I thank God and praise it to God for letting it still be there, and God bless you all, thank y'all for having the meaning about it, and I hope everybody there, whether you like me or whatever, God for us, for the whole city, okay?
I think it's fair to say they like you. Well, listen, I really appreciate you, Cousin Richard, I just wanted you to say firsthand, so the mayor and the Commission and the city overall could hear what it means to you, and we'll-
And give everybody my love, is that true?
Yes, sir, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
All right, bye-bye.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Stewart, that was certainly the first time I've had Little Richard on the phone in public comment time. My goodness, good golly, Miss Molly. All right, next, Jennifer Zimmerman wants to talk to us about Sunday voting, Jennifer-
I'll pass. I'm just gonna say it. I'll pass?
Pass. Thank you very, thank you very much. Marvella Ivory also wants to talk to us about Sunday voting. Marvella, you're recognized for up to five minutes, please, ma'am.
Mayor Rickert and Commissioners, Agenda Item J should go easy like a Sunday morning, because this is a consequentially very important election. We should have some flexibility in allowing the citizens of Macon, Bill to vote on Sunday, October twenty-eighth, from nine a.m. to four p.m. It is in the best interest of the community for you to vote in favor, in fact, everybody sitting up here should vote in favor of the resolution to support Macon, Bill Board of Elections decision to allow Sunday voting. United, you should stand, divided, Macon, Bill will fall, so I know that you're going to vote in favor of it, I'm just going to declare and decree it. Please vote in favor of Sunday voting. Be united, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ivory, appreciate it. Mr. Peter Givens also wants to talk to us about Item J, which I believe is the Sunday voting. Mr. Givens?
Oh, all right, sir, that's another agenda item, I'm sorry, I read it as-
I did, I know I switched J, but I-
That's all right, if you want to talk to us about the Little Richard House, that'd be fine, so you're recognized for up to five minutes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, I'm going to make this quick. I just heard about possibly wanting to sell the Little Richard House. What I'd like to say about that is that it would be nice if you followed protocol, because it was the community that brought all of this to the table, and it should come back to the community. Whenever somebody is thinking about doing something that we have put together, to come to us first and talk to us about it. I mean, we talk, we don't mind talking to you, but it seems like we're being stepped over, we're not getting our due, and I'd just like to say, keep that in mind, please follow the protocol, and include the Pleasant Hill community in these actions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Givens, we appreciate you being here, appreciate your comments, sir. Next, Dr. Holliday, Lindsey Holliday wants to talk to us about Items B and C, which I understand are the trash collection bills. Dr. Holliday, thank you for being here, you're recognized for up to five minutes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, Commission. Yeah, C, Item C is an internal audit of the Services for Advanced Disposal Service, our garbage service. I'm asking that y'all broaden that to be a thorough cost-benefit analysis of our garbage. Right now, if y'all vote, which I expect you to do, no problem, B, we're going to start paying them twelve dollars a month per unit. At fifty thousand and five hundred units, we will be paying six hundred thousand dollars a month, six hundred thousand dollars a month for garbage pickup. Seven point two million dollars a year, seven point two million dollars a year for garbage pickup. You assume that this is a private business, a for-profit business, they're going to make about twenty percent profit, that's about one and a half million dollars a year, that's after they pay for their trucks, after they pay for the personnel insurance, one point five million dollars. What could y'all do with one point five million dollars a year extra? Well, for, if this one point five million for this much, you could pay for the Little Richard House and the Sunday voting and barely hit that one point five million. So garbage is not something you should ever farm out to a private enterprise, it's a necessary, critical public service. Y'all's responsibility is that. Law enforcement and hygiene of the county, that is primary. You know, when we gave away Macon Water Authority, look at that, cities don't give away their water authorities, but we did, they're very profitable. Anything that every citizen definitely needs will be profitable if it's run right. So what you can do, when you do a thorough cost-benefit analysis, you can consider hiring, go into advanced disposal, and hire away their manager, get a loan, get the equipment. They've got good managers, that's all you need to make money on this thing, and give the money back to us, give the money back to the community, use it for Sunday voting, use it for Little Richard House. So all I'm asking is Resolution C, is that you broaden that internal audit to be a thorough cost-benefit analysis. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Holliday, we appreciate you being here, appreciate your comments. Next, Mr. Garvin Flanders wants to talk to us about Item F, which is the furlough and budget reduction. Mr. Flanders, thank you very much for being here, we appreciate your service as a firefighter, and we appreciate you being here tonight, sir.
Yes, sir.
Recognized for up to five minutes.
Thank you, sir. I was back in pre-commission, saw that two of your commissioners added some amendments, very good, I appreciate y'all, thank you. Put it on our department heads, let us see if we can find the money to save instead of sending these guys and women home when they don't honestly can't afford to. So, but one of the things I do want to talk to y'all about real quick of why we're so against the furloughs, I know y'all know I have been very vocal about the stuff going on at Station Three. Chris, if you'll zoom in on this, if you don't mind, wherever you're at here, this is Station Three, that's irrigation that was done, right here. This is firefighters getting up at four o'clock in the morning to be on site and working at five o'clock under lights. And this isn't what firefighters are paid to do, they're paid to save life, property, protect life and property, not this, but these men and women with Macon, Bill Fire Department graciously, day in and day out, do these things. They get up, they do the extra. This here is a turkey fry. Every one of these men that you see in this picture are off duty, they're raising money for MDA, some of them will never use that organization, but they fry two hundred turkeys on Thanksgiving morning and do not spend the time with their family, they go home after lunch and spend it with their family. I can go on and on and on about what these men and women do with the fire department. I spoke with Abby this morning, or this afternoon, one of the things I pointed out to her, when I come on the fire department thirteen years ago, you walk past a sign at Headquarters Fire Station, it says, "Through these doors pass the greatest firefighters in the world." I want to expand on that. When you come into this city, you see some of the greatest employees, not just firefighters, not just police officers, but all employees. They are the backbone of this community, of this government, that keep this city running. So be conscious of where you're taking from them, what you're taking from them, when you're taking it from them, and how you take it from them. I know, and I don't know where the numbers come from, but I heard that without the Sheriff's Department doing the furloughs and out the constitutional officers and elected officials, you're looking at saving three hundred thousand dollars, three hundred, three hundred fifty thousand dollars on your budget. How many times have we sat up here and heard somebody say, "Well, it's only ninety thousand dollars, that's a drop in the bucket for the Little Richard House and a twenty-eight million dollar budget." Well, three hundred thousand dollars in a twenty-eight million dollar budget is a drop in the bucket, let's find it somewhere else, and you're doing the right things by allowing your department heads to see if they can pull. The, really, too, my biggest thing is just, is that, and please be aware that your employees, through all this budget fiasco, even though we've been pitted against taxpayers, pitted against each other, we're not pitted against you guys, we're there, we're there to support you. Right there behind y'all, the seal, two thousand and fourteen, it says, "Forward Together." Calling an employee self-sighted and selfish is not going to move us forward together. We got to move forward together. I urge you to go by Station Three, the new station on Napier Avenue, look at the outstanding job those men and women did with their own resources. I had department heads from Public Works call me and say, "Hey, I got a dump truck, but I have nobody to drive it, we're shorthanded." I said, "Send it, I got a fireman that can drive it, I got a fireman that's got a CDL. I got a backhoe, but I got nobody to drive it, send it, I got a licensed operator that can operate this backhoe." And we made it happen, we pulled together, we made it happen, not just with private sergeants and lieutenants, we had department heads, we had Captain Joe Herndon, Assistant Fire Chief Shane Edwards, Safety Director Captain Chad Davis, we had everybody that pulls together. Firemen will come together and do what needs to be done to get a job done. So I urge you, stop with them, speak to them, go by a fire station, they got a lot of great ideas that can help. This year, don't mean the budget fiasco's over with, we're moving forward, so let's move forward together from here on out. Stop by a fire station, talk to your city employees, because I'm going to be honest with you, we feel like we are falling on deaf ears, we hear nothing from you guys, other than you're misquoting me, or you're taking this out of context, and we're not, we're saying word for word what we hear. So with that being said, I'm going to drop this off with you guys, thumb through it, it's just a little bit of what the men and women do.
Thank you very much, Mr. Flanders, we appreciate you being here, and as I say, appreciate your service. Next, Judge Jeff Hanson wants to talk to us also about the furlough policy. Judge Hanson, you're recognized for up to five minutes, sir, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commission, I just wanted to, we've talked a lot in pre-commission meeting and in committee meetings about the furlough policy, and so I wanted to make a statement publicly to you, and thank you for taking this off the agenda a couple of weeks ago, so we could talk about it, and to make a public commitment to you that we're going to spend less than what we've been budgeted, and that's what I think the goal was, is try to reduce spending, and we're going to be able to do it with a way, without furloughing the employees in our department, I want to thank you for, if you give us that opportunity, but let you know, we're not going to spend more money, we're going to spend less money, and that's what we're trying to do, is save money. So thank you for listening to us, appreciate it.
Thank you, Judge Hanson. We appreciate it. Uh, Mr. Louis Hallgrove wants to talk to us about alcoholic beverage licenses. Mr. Hallgrove, thank you very much for being here. You're recognized for up to five minutes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Uh, I always like to start off with a moment of silence for all this crime involving in death that we have in Macon Bibb County. Give me a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Yes, I see where, I see where you got all these peoples on here trying to get liquor license. Uh, we got enough of alcohol, beverage licenses all over the city. And I just don't feel like we need no more. I know y'all need money. And that's one way of getting money, by licensing these people to sell alcohol, beer, wine, or whatever. But in the long run, you're gonna lose. When people come down with addiction, uh, heart attacks, uh, serosis of the liver, alcohol create all this kind of stuff. Think about what you're doing when you are giving these people license to all killers. We don't need no flu shot if we gonna grant alcohol. What good, uh, flu shot gonna do us? Oh, we killing ourselves. Um, nobody force people to grant, but they do. And, uh, it's an addiction. Believe me, it's an addiction. And, uh, sometimes people can't help themselves. They have to get help, rehab, it do help. But it take more than five days. Somebody say, "Go in the rehab and stay five days." They'll recover and add it. They'll lie. Take longer than five days when you got addiction, if you addicted to alcohol. Oh, it's a drug. Alcohol is a drug. One of the worst drugs we got. And Mayor, I played on the street where Little Richard High sat. Grew up Craft, Persley, Pickan Street, all around that area. Where Little Richard High sat in there, used to be a field. We used to throw beer cans and all that over there in that field. But we was supporting Little Richard High. What we got to do, we got to help that high be self-sufficient. We got to put money into that place. That's something we got to do as peoples. We can depend on the county. And man, you know, the firemen, I put Macon Bibb County Fire Department against anybody in the world. Got some great people working at there. Great people. I know firsthand. And they'll do anything to help anybody. So, uh, Mayor, if something coming up where it concern the firemen, do all you can to help them. And I hope y'all ain't thinking about, uh, putting no alcohol in no theater. I don't mind any good money. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hallgrove. Appreciate, appreciate you being here. Appreciate your comments. Claire Cox wants to talk to us about Sunday voting. Ms. Cox, thank you very much for being here. You're recognized for up to five minutes.
Thank you. I won't take that long. Um, I represent Georgia women and those who stand with us today, as I have done before this commission before. And I speak in favor and our group speak in fa, speaks in favor of the resolution to support Sunday voting in Macon Bibb. Georgia women's second core principle is fair and representative elections without undue burdens on voters. We are not unmindful about the cost that goes along with increasing voter access, but just as we stood solidly for an election to provide representation for District One on this commission, we stand firmly on the side of anything that increases opportunities for voting. Greater access means an election is more representative of the community. And more than one day of the weekend is needed for employees and some fates who worship on Saturday. Please vote yes on the resolution supporting the Board of Elections' decision to allow Sunday voting.
Thank you, Ms. Cox. We appreciate it. Uh, next, Ms. Sarah Hunt wants to talk to us about multiple items on the agenda. Ms. Hunt, as always, welcome. Deli, delighted that you're here. You're recognized for up to five minutes. Please, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. First thing I want to talk about is the amended, committed amendment concerning the Macon Chamber of Commerce building. They have had that building for over 50 years for a dollar a year. They have already cheated us out of millions. When I look at the size of the building and the rate of that would be charged to someone else, it would be about $3,000 a month is light. $3,600 a year would be a fair assessment of what they should be paying for the rent. And you giving them a break at $36,000 a year. If you're gonna do it over the next eight years, that's only $288,000 for eight years. And you talking about, we got a budget, we have budget problems. That's one reason why. We're giving away too much. We need to pull back. We need to reevaluate these contracts that we have with all these folk that are paying $1 a year or less. We need to look at that. We need to see the value of our property and do fair assessments. And if you're gonna give a break on the rent, don't give it all to them. My God, I can't stay in my house free. I gotta pay rent. So they need to pay rent, too. Secondly, I'm glad that you're doing an audit on the advanced disposal contract, because there are people that have called me complaining that their garbage is not being picked up. We had better garbage service when we had it in-house, when we were doing our own pickup. We, the citizens, want to go back to our own system, do whatever you need to do to get the equipment and everything in place, to have our own people. We got folk that lost jobs, that are unemployed because you stopped collecting our own garbage. And at the time, I was told that nobody would lose their job, that everybody, those that didn't go to work for advanced disposal, they're gonna be working for the recycling program. Well, it's not working. So we need to go back, take our own system back in hand. If you need to, then you need to rehire Richard back to manage it, 'cause he was doing a good job managing the garbage system. So, and, and Lord, poor man, he was managing four or five different departments for what one person is getting paid now. And you got five, turn that one man's job into five different departments. So go back, hire him back and get rid of some of them departments and let him run that system. We need that garbage system back in-house. Now, you say that the landfill is a problem. Well, if you're gonna do something, then hire advanced disposal to dispose of our garbage after we collect it. Let us take it to them and they dispose of it. But we do the collecting of it. And I think that will create jobs for folk in our community. And the folk that's complaining, I get 10, 15 calls a week about they didn't pick up my garbage, or they took my garbage can and threw it down and broke the lid off. And my son stood outside and saw them tear up the neighbor next door trash can and left it laying in the middle of the road. Advanced disposal did. So I think when you do the evaluation, that should be considered, too. They need to reimburse you, the city, some money for the uncollected garbage, uncollected services that the people did not receive. And you can look down, look around, and think it's not a fact. But if we poll the citizens of Macon, I think they would say, "Let's do it in-house," because they're tired of their garbage is not being picked up properly. Everybody's talked about the, uh, Sunday voting. I'm in favor. I thank you for agreeing to do it, and I hope you will fund it. I know if you can spend $41,000 for, uh, one person, you can certainly do Sunday voting for $4,500.
Thank you, Ms. Hunt. We appreciate you being here and appreciate your comments. Uh, Mr. Seth Clark also wants to talk to us about the Little Richard House. Thank you for being here, Mr. Clark. You're recognized for up to five minutes, sir.
Thank y'all for your time. Uh, my name's Seth Clark. My wife, three-year-old son and I live just a couple blocks away from historic Pleasant Hill and attend Mass at St. Peter Claver. And I'm here in support of the county honoring its commitment to the Little Richard Center tonight. First, I want to thank the commission for voting it out of committee for further action. Secondly, I want to thank Commissioner Watkins for holding a listening session at the center a couple of weeks back and thank Commissioner Lucas for attending as well. I'd also like to thank Commissioner Watkins for continuing to search and finding stagnant dollars in the budget to meet the county's commitment to Pleasant Hill and the center. I just wanted to take some time to briefly share my takeaway of that community meeting and just the general public feeling about the center that I've seen in the community. There were about 20 to 25 people there on a random Thursday night. The age and the race of the room varied, as of the parts of Macon we were all from. The main takeaway was this. The county shirking its financial obligation to the center for a couple, three months and the ensuing conversations around the project meant more than I think the, the commission anticipated. When the project is discussed, the phrase, quote, "We didn't budget for the project" was heard as, "We didn't budget for the project because you don't matter, because Pleasant Hill doesn't matter." This feeling is exacerbated by the fact that the center's array of services, from which the county as a whole will benefit, will be provided among displays of history about Pleasant Hill created by the community and for it. For months, everyone watched the commission struggle with the budget and the politics of it, even going as far as passing a tax increase without an attached budget. And in all that unfortunate chaos, meeting your financial obligations to the historic and vital facility was ostensibly not prioritized. Fortunately, though, with tonight's vote, that can be put to bed. Look, I really do believe we're better than this and better than the process that brought us here. No one in this county should feel the way folks said they felt in that meeting a couple of weeks back. And I truly don't believe that any commissioner or the mayor stood for office because they believe our neighbors don't matter. In fact, I believe it to be just the opposite. I believe it's what drove each and every one of you to run. We've all witnessed the incredible work people like Peter Givens and Naomi Johnson have done in their community over the years. The center is a manifestation of decades of dedication to Pleasant Hill, and the services it will provide will continue to lift the residents up and lend a hand to creating a more prosperous neighborhood with a stronger tax base. That's why this investment is good for everyone. It's not just because it makes us feel good tonight. It's that the center's work will pay off tomorrow. I really believe y'all are here out of goodwill and good faith. I hope y'all help my neighbors believe that and stand by your initial promise to the Pleasant Hill community and our surrounding neighbors. Please keep your word and honor the deal you made with us so that we can all continue to grow as a county together. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Mr. Willie Frazier wants to talk to us about alcohol sales and also the Little Richard House, I believe. Uh, Mr. Frazier, you're recognized for up to five minutes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commission and all of you that's here today. You know, I stand here knowing that in a few minutes, I'm gonna be talking about Pleasant Hill as well, because I truly stand for everything that Pleasant Hill is about. But there's something that I heard in the pre-commission meeting that I must address. And that is this sale of alcohol. Now, I know that we need the money for alcohol sales, and I'm okay with that. But I have to make you to know that that 1,800 block up on Nunn Avenue in that school zone, because I've worked with special need kids with the Board of Education, even though I don't have that job anymore, I still love those kids. And it would be a travesty to turn around and open up alcohol somewhere where our kids can get hurt or in danger, because at the Board of Education, we're taught and we're all about protecting those kids at every cost. And so I'm gonna stand against that. I really stand against the sale of ac, so much alcohol in Macon, just like that guy back there, because of the fact, I say, I don't drink. So I'm not missing anything by alcohol. I drunk myself to death when I watched my dad drink himself to death. I held his hand until he took his last breath because of alcohol. I quit cold turkey, 'cause I was trying to be like my father. But some things need to change, because we're in positions where we're trying to change our community. We're trying to make our community better, our kids better, our lives better. And we need to change those things, because I feel like we can find money in other places. I feel like we can do things in other ways, not putting down what you do because it's needed. We want to work with you on the things that's needed, so we're not so, so far against that. We're with you on that, but we gotta do it in the right way in order to get our community back. So we gotta protect those kids. We gotta protect our community, because you know what? I'm tired of seeing youngsters, teenagers, 20 years old and stuff like that dying in our streets. I'm tired of seeing them getting intoxicated, full of drugs and full of all of that stuff like that, and going out and robbing me and you, going out and hurting us and stuff like that. This is a great community. And it's a shame that they're all getting locked up. We're not gonna have anybody to look after. So we gotta change that whole mindset. When it come to Pleasant Hill, the reason why we stand for Pleasant Hill so much, I stand for the Little Richard Panama House, but I stand for all of Pleasant Hill, because we need it. It's the cornerstone to this community. And so honor what's been said. Otherwise, nothing should have never been touched. You know, I'm, you know, I, I could say this truly now. I'm not for blight, but I'm not against blight, because we need new stuff. But the thing about that is, I'm not with the destruction of everything that's historical, 'cause let me ask you this. Let me and you take a shovel of peace and go down there in the yard to the Cannonball House to start digging it up. You know where we gonna be in about two minutes after that? Because the Cannonball House is historical. It's all kind of historical stuff down there. We gonna be right there in that county jail. So somebody tell me, how do you go dig up a historic neighborhood? If you look on the highway, there's a big sign there that say Historic District in Pleasant Hill, but you're over there digging it up. How do you do that? Because you know what? I'm searching for folk that I could turn around and find that'll stop that, because I'm about preservation. If you are about preserving Newtown, Macon, HML, all of y'all, then if you're for blight, you ain't for preserving. I'm about preserving Macon. We can blight some things, but some things should never be touched. The Little Richard Panama House, Booker T. Washington Center, Arts Jones Center, all of these fading fires that, that's normally, people don't even know what the fading fire is, but those are all of those historical places in this city that's slated for destruction. I'm going to clean up the Arts Jones Center myself, because you know what? That's where little kids in the neighborhood, white kids, black kids, all kids, used to dance and learn the arts. Booker T. Washington, we used to go and play, swim in the pool. You know, that center is not big enough in the Little Richard Panama Center. We need that, but give it back to Pleasant Hill. If you don't want it, we'll find a way to take care of it. Valerie Nguyen, you know, I'd be against a lot of things, but when you say, "Sell it," yeah, if you can't sell it, give it back to us. We'll show you what can really be done with it, 'cause some of us got to drive to do something with it. So I'm not mad at you about saying, "Um, sell it." Yeah, come on, sell it. But if you can't sell it, give it back to us. If you want to sell it, then help us come up with the money so we can buy it from you. And at the same time, do the Arts Jones Center, do the Booker T. Washington Center, do all of those centers as well, because we intend for those to stay in Pleasant Hill as well. Help us to help you, because everything about Macon, we're trying to save Macon. We ain't trying to destroy Macon. You are the leaders of Macon. So guess what? Learned this right here. We trying to help you, too. And we trust you. If we didn't trust you, believe me, you wouldn't be there.
Thank you very much, Mr. Frazier. We appreciate your comment. Appreciate you being here. Finally, Mr. Jordan Mohammed.
Peace and blessings, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners and all the wonderful people that came out to stand up for what they believe in this evening. Uh, it's an honor to stand before you. I, um, I'm really appalled at the idea of someone talking about selling the Little Richard House. It's really sad, uh, that you would have that great of disrespect for the heritage. Now, today, we were very blessed to hear from a man who has represented us well in the world. We are blessed to be in this room, be alive today. We heard Little Richard's voice in Macon, Georgia, in City Hall. This is history. And you talking about, you appreciate him. How can you appreciate him when you haggle over a small thing that you already have owed the community? Pleasant Hill has been cut in half. Was cut in half. Almost destroyed the neighborhood. And then here comes DOT again. We want to spare Shirley Hills, so we don't do it up there, but we gonna come in and, and... So we don't do it up there, but we gonna come in and, and, and cut and chop on Pleasant Hill again, and we are trying to do something to strengthen a renaissance in that neighborhood with a house. And the house is not too small to commemorate Little Richard, to commemorate the, the history of Pleasant Hill, to be a place that people can come and find information about jobs, a resource center for that neighborhood. It deserves it. The people deserve it, and we talk about, uh, investing in the community. You find money for what you want to find money for. You spend money on things that you think are important, but when it comes to our communities, we are neglected. You don't see us as important. And that is what comes down now. We saw a very sad day where the voting went along racial lines. Earlier, when we were talking about closing libraries and pools and recreation centers and cutting off the buses riding, we saw a vote come down racial lines. That's a sad day for Macon-Bibb County, and we have got to be for all the people, white, black, Latino, Asian, Indian. Everybody's concerns, everybody's needs have got to be in our hearts as representatives. To try to sell that house, that would be robbing the people, robbing us, and we not gonna stand for robbery. We didn't come down here to be robbed. We pay taxes, and if you say, well, you don't have a big house, but we buy goods, and that is fueling the sales tax. That is a major source of income coming to our community. And you know how we can solve a lot of the problems of our shortfalls of taxes is to invest in our assets. We are a beautiful city that has a great historical legacy. We are a beautiful city that offers, uh, positive cultural, beautiful arts to the community. We have to invest in our youth, invest in our education, invest in our infrastructure of the people, and that is how more people will want to live in Macon-Bibb County. That is how we can stop losing our youth. We have to provide jobs. These things are, this is why Macon has been going now. This is why we have poverty, and the Community Enhancement Authority is designed to eradicate poverty. Why would you not want to support that? Poverty is the main thing chokehold around the throats of Macon-Bibb County right now, poverty. Why would you not want to support that? Something has to be wrong with your thinking, but again, you've heard Little Richard today, and we didn't have to wake up this morning. You're blessed to hear this man who has said he goes out through the world talking about his hometown, Macon, Georgia. He has lent his image, he has lent his voice to the Convention and Visitors Bureau to promote Macon-Bibb County and bring tourism to Macon-Bibb County. And we're talking about a beautiful neighborhood, Pleasant Hill, that has an incredible history. Jefferson Long, so many people, you can go down the list, awesome people in that neighborhood. Why don't you want to help that neighborhood come up? I don't understand that. And it's, it's either one or two things. Either you are very, very ignorant, or you are very, very hateful.
Mr. Mohammed.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda, Committee reports from standing committees. Uh, first is Operations and Finance Committee, and that report will be given to us by Chairman Watkins. Chairman Watkins?
Thank you, sir. And before I start, I just want to say again, I, I've, I've sat in on many, many county commission meetings. Um, and that's the first one where Little Richard himself has spoken to us during, during public comment. I mean, that's not to be minimalized at all. Operations and Finance Committee met on September twenty-fifth, twenty-eighteen and took the following action. The committee heard a report on tax, bids, SIDS, and other tax districts. This included, this report included how they work and information on how they're formed. Um, the committee also heard a report from our Finance Director on the General Fund, Central Plex, our Central Plex and Bowden Golf Course year-to-date revenues and expenses. The committee approved the furlough policy with amended changes regarding constitutional officers, elected officials, as well as other department heads. The committee accept the Health Promotion and Well-being Grant from the ACCG in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars. The committee approved the following agreements: one with the Industrial Authority for the Macon Water and the Macon Water Authority for the Seven-O Fund Project at Safki Industrial Park, and a second agreement with the Macon Water Authority and Industrial Authority for all seven-oh-four revolving loan fund projects. The committee approved allowing Sunday voting and appropriated forty-five hundred dollars to fund that day of voting. The committee approved transferring twenty-seven thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars from fund balance to the District Attorney's Office for contract labor and to fulfill a spacer contract. The committee also approved transferring fifteen thousand, fifty dollars from fund balance to animal welfare to pay for two new hot water heaters. The committee approved four-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand dollars in splotch projects for new lighting at Central City Park Ball Fields and one-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand for the installation of this lighting. This concludes the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Watkins. Uh, next is the Economic and Community Development Committee, and that report will be given to us by Chairman Lucas. Chairman Lucas?
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. The Economic and Community Development Committee met on September twenty-fifth, twenty-eighteen and took the following action. The committee heard an update from the Macon-Bibb County Industrial Authority about industry in the area. The committee also approved the Eagle Scout Service Project of, uh, Markeith Cornelius and authorized the placement of four benches to be located at Fillmore Thomas Park Basketball Courts. This concludes the report of the Economic and Community Development Committee.
Uh, thank you, Chairman Lucas. I understand the Public Safety Committee did not meet and has no report? Okay, uh, that takes us then to Facilities and Engineering Committee, and that report will be given to us by Vice Chairman Allen. Vice Chairman Allen?
Mr. Mayor, the Facilities Engineering Committee met on September twenty-fifth, twenty-eighteen. The committee approved the conditional waiver and release of the demolition lien filed against five-fifty-six Straight Street. The committee also heard an update on code enforcement in Macon-Bibb County. That completes the report on Facilities and Engineering, sir.
Uh, thank you, Vice Chairman Allen. Uh, that brings us then to the, our consent agenda, which are alcohol license requests. Um, there are, there were six alcohol license requests. Uh, some are existing facilities, and a, and a change of ownership requires that the new licensee be licensed, so not all of these are new locations. Uh, some are existing locations with new ownership. Each one of the six were accompanied by all of the requisite paperwork that is required for an alcohol license. That is a, a background check by the Sheriff's Office into the applicant, uh, and a satisfactory background check, um, a certificate from Business Development Services that the appropriate fees have been tendered and paid. Planning and zoning compliance certificate to say that it's in a zone that's appropriate for, for that particular use, and a measurement form uh, from the county engineer that certifies that the distance requirements from other prohibited structures have been met, and that, finally, the ad that ran in the Macon Telegraph. Uh, each of those, uh, provided that information. Uh, one, however, there was a question about, uh, change in circumstances and whether the distance requirements were still being met. The Committee of the Whole decided to ho- hold that particular license, so now there are just five, uh, for consideration. Uh, the first is, uh, the, uh, Shurling Drive Gas and Food Mart Incorporated, doing business as Sitgo at nineteen-oh-four, uh, Shurling Drive, uh, and that is for beer and wine package sales to go, uh, at that location. Uh, the second, uh, is for Late Night Macon, uh, located at four-twenty, uh, Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard. Uh, and that license application is for liquor, uh, mixed drinks, beer and wine to be consumed on the premise at that location. Uh, next license is, uh, Macon Smiles, doing business as Smiles of Macon at five-seventy Mulberry Street in downtown Macon. That is for a piano bar that is requesting liquor, mixed drinks, beer, uh, draft beer and wine to be consumed on the premise at that, uh, location. Um, uh, next is the application, uh, at eighteen-hundred Pineona that's being withheld, uh, by the Committee of the Whole and is not under consideration. Uh, Hartley Bridge Sitgo Incorporated at forty-five-thirty-five Hartley Bridge Road uh, is for beer and wine package sales, uh, to go, uh, at that location. And the final, uh, application is from R and T's Twenty-Eighteen LLC, uh, at, uh, forty-two-oh-four Marion Drive, and that is for beer and wine package sales to go, uh, at that location. The Committee of the Whole recommends approval of those five licenses. Is there further discussion? Uh, may I pro tem, Tim?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Um, uh, and I'm assuming that, uh, Planning and Zoning, uh, has also, uh, signed off and approved, uh, Item B and C as well?
The Planning and Zoning Certificate was there. It was the distance requirement form that-
So, so, so I'll just ask the attorney to look into that there is a moratorium on local licenses downtown. When I said on Planning and Zoning, we put that in place, there is a moratorium. So I'm just wondering why every time there seems to be one that comes up downtown, it's in here, and I'm just interested in, in looking at PNZ's current, uh, stipulation as far as moratorium, that why do these downtown keep getting the pass or, or, you know, what have you? Because if there's a moratorium, uh, you know, how, how does this happen? And, uh, not to say we gonna hold this one up, but I just want you to look into that, and, uh, and I'm interested in seeing, uh, that moratorium and what it states and bringing that to the Commission, uh, for that. Thanks, sir.
Thank you. May I pro tem? Uh, additional conversation, Commissioner Watkins?
And so the, you're correct, there is a moratorium on alcohol sales, package to go. So like your physical liquor store can't have any more of them, but bars consume on premise, there's no moratorium on that action, but the actual package store concept, like where you buy the bottle of Jack Daniels and walk out with it. Can't have any more of those. That's the moratorium.
Thank you, Commissioner Watkins. This is a further conversation. Hearing none, the Committee of the Whole recommends approval, all in favor of, of issuance of those five licenses, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and those five licenses will be approved, and we'll get you an answer, may I pro tem about the, the status of the moratorium. Um, that brings us now to, uh, old, old business, um, and, uh, the first item of old business, um, is the, uh, lease extension, ground, ground lease extension of, of the Chamber, uh, building, uh, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to authorize the Mayor to execute the necessary agreement with the Macon Chamber of Commerce and the Macon-Bibb County Urban Development Authority to amend the ground lease agreement for the Chamber Building located at three-oh-five Coliseum Drive, which is currently scheduled to terminate on May thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two, so as to revise for extending said ground lease agreement for an additional eight years through May thirty-first, two thousand and thirty, and so as to provide for lease payments by the Chamber in the amount of seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars per year during the terms of the extension for a total of a hundred and forty thousand and for other purposes.
Um, the, uh, Operations and, no, I'm sorry, I misspoke. The Committee of the Whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Uh, Commissioner Watkins?
Want to clarify one thing for the good of the body. So this is a ground lease of just the land. So this seventeen thousand dollars annually, what was appraised, and, and it took me a minute to understand and get it under, complete, because seventeen thousand for the building sounds very low, but they're not leasing the building nor do they rent it from us. They only rent the land, and then they erected that structure using their own money. Um, at the end of the lease, at the end of the lease term, the county would actually own that building. They won't take it with them. It's, it's a... But that's why you see the appraisal is for a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. That's just that quarter acre or whatever of land, not including the improvements on it.
Thank you, Commissioner Watkins. Further discussion, Commissioner Lucas, got your light on?
Thank you. I am happy to see that this has been revised. The, um, contract was revised, and the Chamber, uh, came up with a figure that they, um, are asking us to accept. I am not pleased that for the additional four years of the contract, we're not able to get, uh, any money. Our taxpayers don't have the luxury of paying one dollar per year, and I do hope that we will, whenever we have these contracts to come up or, um, uh, we will take an in-depth look at all of the contracts that we have with different entities and where there are these sweetheart deals that are multi-year deals, we will look at, uh, making those more equitable and also looking out more for our taxpayers who ultimately own that land that this building, um, is on. Um, the other thing that I have a concern about, and I'm pleased that we're getting, um, something, uh, over these next eight years, uh, in addition to our not being able to get any additional money for, uh, four more years, I'm concerned about the fact that, uh, the Chamber still will be able to lease, uh, that facility, that building, and collect rent. And they will be moving, which, I mean, I understand why they're moving, and I applaud them. But, uh, these are some of the kinds of things that we've got to look at, and when we have these contracts to come up, we've got to make sure that we're not just giving away the store. That's how we have gotten into the financial situation that we are in now, giving back so much or not ever collecting, uh, on a lot of things. Um, giving back, um, uh, you know, half of the, the property tax, uh, uh, you know, to city dwellers, twenty million dollars. Then we gave back the other half of it, another twenty, and that's why we're broke. So we don't want to remain broke. We want to start to build our financial, uh, status back up to where it needs to be. And so I'm just calling on all of my colleagues to, let's work together and try and make sure that we ask people to pay what they are, what they owe, not to us, but to the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lucas. Um, n- n- no further, uh, lights on. Committee of the Whole recommends approval of the committee amendment. Um, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the committee amendment signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the committee amendment, uh, is adopted. Uh, next is, uh, Item B, which is, um, uh, an amendment, uh, to the contract with advanced disposal. Uh, it also, uh, has been revised and is a committee amendment, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to authorize the Mayor to execute the Fourth Amendment to the agreement between Macon-Bibb County and Advanced Disposal Services Macon LLC to maintain the current base rate, to provide for three scope of work rate adjustments for a new unit rate total of twelve dollars and three cents per month, and to provide for temporary grapple service at a cost not to exceed seventy-seven thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty dollars and for other purposes.
The Committee of the Whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the committee amendment to, to the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the, uh, committee amendment to the resolution is adopted. Uh, next is Item C, uh, which is a companion bill that calls for an internal audit, um, as well as a full-scale, uh, uh, information campaign about solid waste collection. I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to request that the Internal Auditor conduct an audit of the contract for services with Advanced Disposal Services LLC from January the first, two thousand and fourteen through September the thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen, to request that County Manager implement a full-scale advertising and information campaign for purposes of informing the public of the new plan for the delivery of solid waste services in Macon-Bibb County and for other lawful purposes.
Uh, the Committee of the Whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Lucas? Commissioner Lucas, got your light on again.
Uh, Mr. Mayor and fellow commissioners, uh, um, I sponsored this, uh, resolution and I believe it's cosponsored by Commissioner Tillman. Um, and, uh, we encouraged others to also, uh, co-sponsor, but at this time, um, I would like to, um, ask that we substitute, that we divide this particular resolution into two, um, separate resolutions. Uh, one, um, I think you've gotten a copy of it, um, which is... Okay, that we divide these two resolutions and at the appropriate time, Mr. County Attorney, I'd like to introduce the first one.
Okay. Got a motion and a second to, to bifurcate this resolution, uh, into two, uh, one that would, ma'am?
Bifurcate. I move that we bifurcate the...
(laughing)
That's great. Into two.
So, you'd have, you'd have two resolutions, one dealing with the audit and then the other one dealing with the full-scale advertising and information campaign. There was a motion and second, is there further discussion, uh, on, on that motion, uh, to bifurcate this resolution? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion to bifurcate this and have two separate votes, signify by saying aye?
Bifurcation.
The, then, the, the, the ayes have it and, and we're gonna vote on these separately. So, the first one then, I assume, uh, Mr. County Attorney, uh, if, if you would, I, I suppose the first one is on the audit, is that correct?
Right.
Did you do them that way? And then, Commissioner Lucas, still got you, uh, for additional comments and then-
Well, I just wanted to make that motion and then have those two read and we vote on them separately.
Okay.
Uh, the, the first one, the, on the internal audit, does have a, a change which does add the ninety day, uh, ninety days that some, uh, commissioners wanted added there. I don't think it makes, it's gonna make any difference 'cause it's gonna take that amount of time to get all of the information together anyway, but I'll, uh, allow the clerk to read the-
But, well, actually, I think the attorney's gonna have to read it for us because it's on his screen, uh, right? Right, okay. So, the county attorney will read the, the, uh, the first, uh, part of the resolution.
Yeah, a resolution to Macon Bibb County Commission to request that the internal auditor conduct an audit of the contract for services with Advanced Disposal Services LLC from January first, two thousand and fourteen through September thirty, two thousand and eighteen. Said audit to be conducted ninety days following the approval of this resolution and for other lawful purposes.
Is there further discussion, uh, on the first part, uh, of the resolution, uh, then dealing with the audit? Hearing none, all in favor of the f- resolution dealing with the audit, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no? The ayes have it and, uh, the first part is, uh, adopted. The second part of the resolution then, uh, Mr. County Attorney, have you got that in front of you? Would you read that for us, please?
Resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to request that the county manager implement a full-scale advertising information campaign for the purposes of informing the public of the new plan for the delivery of solid waste services in Macon Bibb County and for other lawful, lawful purposes.
Uh, the, the Committee of the Whole, uh, recommends approval. Is there further discussion on the second half, uh, of the bifurcated resolution? Hearing none, all in favor of the second half, uh, dealing with the information and advertising campaign, signify by saying aye? Oppose, no? The ayes have it and, uh, the second part of the resolution i- is also adopted. Uh, that brings us down to Item D, uh, which is a, uh, transfer of funds, uh, for the, uh, Community Enhancement Authority to operate the Little Richard House, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission to approve a supplemental appropriation for the transfer of ninety thousand dollars from fund balance in the FY nineteen budget for the purpose of providing the necessary funding for the Macon Bibb County Community Enhancement Authority to operate the Little Richard House as a neighborhood resource center for the Pleasant Hill neighborhood for fiscal year two thousand and nineteen and for other lawful purposes.
The Committee of the Whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Uh, Commissioner Winn, got your light on?
Mr. Mayor, first let me say that there is, um, the concern I have is not with the Little Richard House, it is with the Community Enhancement Authority to operate the Little Richard House. I am all in favor of the Little Richard House because it has, it has historic value to our community as a mus- the, the home of a musical giant in our community. I just think it can be operated better by Pleasant Hill, by our city, by privatizing it. I looked down the street, almost less than a mile, and there's the Allman Brothers Big House. There's a very big comparison there. The Allman Brothers Big House is privatized, it's a five oh-one C, um, and, and that means it doesn't pay taxes, and it is funded by people coming to the house, paying a fee to go there, fifteen dollars a person. It is funded by membership, annual memberships, it is funded by rental of the facility in the back where they have a little pavilion to do parties and other events, it is funded through private funds. And I think that if this community takes over the Little Richard House, which I think it should, it should be privatized just as the Allman Brothers Big House has been done. The community can show its support for the Little Richard South House by giving the funds to operate it in the manner in which it should be operated by our local community and specifically people out of Pleasant Hill. It's alluded to here that tonight, that some people can do a better job of that, and I think they can because they care so deeply. There's some people that are here that are very, very, very concerned about the Pleasant Hill area and keeping that up, and I agree that there should be restoration going on versus tearing down because I can see that as an area that could be beautiful, lovely little homes again, as they once were a long time ago. But again, the concern I have is who operates the Little Richard House? It should be open as a resource center, it should be enjoyed by our community. I think it's as valuable as the Allman Brothers House, but I see that the, the similarities and I see that the Little, the Allman Brothers House is run privately, it is run by private funds, it can be done by that. We talk about ninety thousand being a big amount and ninety thousand being a small amount. Well, it's a drop in the bucket if you wanna be honest. This community can dig up ninety thousand dollars from somewhere. There are people in this community that will do that if we just ask them to. So, that was the reason I think that we should have someone else operate this house. It should be privatized, it should be run by people locally. The Community Enhancement Authority was drawn up by a particular representative who represents part of Bibb County. That authority was, uh, drawn up through the legislature, that person also made themselves chairman of the authority and will benefit financially from that authority. For me, that's not ethical. For me, that doesn't sound right, doesn't seem right, doesn't smell right. And I think that's why, as a community, we should purchase or give away. We can get, we, listen, the house was moved by GDOT, Georgia Department of Transportation, it was renovated by them. We are so fortunate that's been done. It's a beautiful little house. If you haven't seen it on Craft Street, you need to go by there. It has some property around it, it can be used as a resource center as, as has, has been indicated, and it should be used that way. And then we can start developing around that, but we should have, let me just tell you about something else about the Allman Brothers Big House. I contacted them. They have two paid staff, their house, by the way, as you know, is ten times as big as the Little Richard House, and the property is much bigger too with a pavilion on it. They have two paid staff, they have two part-time staff and twelve volunteers that are ready to run at any moment to do anything there and a hundred extra volunteers that are willing to do things. That's how we can run the Little Richard House. We have got those people in this community that will do that for us if we just let them do it. Let them do it, let our community take over and show that the value of that house is as valuable to our community as the Allman Brothers Big House. And I asked how the Allman Brothers Big House was doing, they said they're doing fine financially. They get money from private funds, they get a few grants, but most of their money comes from the community. I was there Saturday afternoon, there were visitors from out of this, out of state and out of Macon that came here, paid their fifteen bucks to walk through this house, it's full of memorabilia. I can see us putting memorabilia in the Little Richard House just as well, having some resource information about the Pleasant Hill neighborhood and its historic value to this community. What you all are not understanding that I am opposing is the way that this house is, who, who is going to operate this house? Not that it's gonna not be there, it's who's gonna operate it. I think that our community should be the people that operate it, not some person that made up an authority, put themselves in charge and will benefit financially from it.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Winn. Commissioner Schlesinger, got you next, sir.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, those of us who have been, um, in the, um, loop know that the preservation of Little Richard House is a, um, concept that, uh, goes back at least a, a decade. Um, it was part of the mitigation, um, plan that, um, Peter Gibbons and Naomi Johnson and other people from, uh, Pleasant Hill, uh, envisioned, entered into negotiation with, um, the Georgia Department of, um, Transportation, negotiated and managed to, uh, to save by, uh, by moving it to its, um, present, um, prominent location. The, um, fact of the matter is, is that, um, this commission approved, um, contractual legislation to, um, support the, uh, House through the, um, um, Community Enhancement, uh, Authority. Um, there is a contract, that's a legal agreement, as far as I'm concerned, um, that's also a, um, moral and ethical agreement, and I think as a commission, um, i- i- if for no other reason, um, we need to, uh, stand behind the agreement that we have, uh, already, uh, made.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Schlesinger. Uh, next, Commissioner Watkins, got you? Sir?
And to, to echo, uh, Commissioner Schlesinger's same points, the commission, although it was a contentious vote, the commission, on behalf of Macon Bibb County, the entity that we represent, signed, approved and signed a contract through the official ways that we do it. It was a completely valid process. That happened. This is the part that we said we were gonna do in that contract. I'm tempted to get into the discussion on what's similar, the Allman Brothers House or whatnot, one is a museum, one is an eight-hundred-square-foot house, but that's irrelevant because we agreed to do something at the Little Richard House, and this is that obligation being fulfilled. We... Whether or not our opinions of the Community Enhancement Authority, uh, don't matter, that is who the community wants to run their center. That's who has spent the time in the community, that who, that's who works in the community every day. It wasn't an arbitrary organization formed by some guy. The state of Georgia, the state of Georgia's legislative body, the General Assembly, approved this, it was signed by the governor, the executive director was appointed by the governor, who happens to be a state representative, it's not an arbitrary thing that happened through magic. Everything has gone through appropriate channels with the formation of the CEA, with, with the agreements that were signed for the mitigation agreement, the contract that was signed here, the only thing that's out of line is us not fulfilling our, our, our duties that we agreed to. Are you?
Thank you, Commissioner Watkins. May I pro tem Tillman?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, probably back in two thousand and five or seven, I get the year sometime confused, I, I, I remember, uh, it was a humbling experience, I first wanted to be a city council person, I ran for office and, uh, uh, Mike Cranford, uh, defeated me by one hundred thirty-one votes. That was probably back in two thousand and seven. And I, uh, came down and I just learned the process because Psalm says you wasn't ready. So, I tried to really just learn the process. And, uh, I think sometimes, uh, we aren't ready. We really need to learn the process. Uh, I do agree, uh, with, uh, commissioners that we need to allow the people, uh, in the area to run the, uh, House, I do agree with that. But we also need to help fund them because we have an agreement. I wanna go back and remind commissioners because sometimes it appears that it's personal or it's who is in charge of something. We need to understand that in two thousand and twelve, this just didn't happen day before yesterday, two months ago, the Community Enhancement has been in place in the new charter since two thousand and twelve. That's six years ago, it's in the charter. So, uh, because we see something now, all of a sudden it looks new, when in essence we may just be new to the game or may to, be new to the situation. So, um, it's very important to understand that in two thousand and twelve, the Community Enhancement is a part of the charter and, uh, I agree. We allow the people of, uh, Pleasant Hill community to run it, uh, and we're gonna give it to them to run with ninety thousand dollars. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, may I pro tem Tillman, uh, no further, no further discussion, uh, I, all in favor, uh, of the ordinance, signify by saying aye? Oppose, no? Uh, one, one no, the ayes have it and the ordinance is adopted. Um, that brings us to Item E, uh, which is a revision to our, our policy regarding the use of purchasing cards, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission to revise Section nineteen dash fifteen related to the Macon Bibb County purchasing cards so as to provide additional restrictions related to the use of purchasing cards to purchase meals and for other lawful purposes.
Uh, Committee of the Whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance, uh, signify by saying aye? Oppose, no? The ayes have it and the ordinance i- is adopted. Uh, Item F, uh, is a, a resolution, uh, to establish the city's furlough policy, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption, and then I understand we've got an amendment.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to establish Macon Bibb County's furlough policy related to implementation of the FY two thousand and nineteen furlough budget reductions and to provide for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Uh, Commissioner Watkins, did, did you have a motion that you wanted to make, sir?
Yes, sir. Um, so in committee, uh, and it's already written out, but Item Seven, as we discussed in committee, we approved, um, one amendment to include constitutional officers as well as elected officials, that if they had the ability within their budget to find savings elsewhere, they weren't, they were not gonna be forced to, uh, implement a furlough on their individual employee salaries. Uh, we made that amendment for constitutionals and elected officials, so, so today, uh, Commissioner Allen wanna expand that to include, um, all department heads and all, all agencies within our purview, um, that they would be given the flexibility within their budget. Um, if they, adding the caveat that they need to present their plan in writing, and Item Eight in the amendment addresses creating a furlough bank, so to speak, um, that, that departments that had excessive savings would be able to share that savings with other departments, i.e. E-nine-one-one. Um, if some departments out here had the ability to save more than what they anticipated, they could pa- share that with E-nine-one-one or any other department that couldn't find savings naturally. And that was Item Seven and Eight.
Um, so, thank you, Commissioner. I, I'm, I'm gonna ask, uh, the county attorney to r- read the relevant, uh, parts that, that have been in the, incorporated into the floor substitute.
Yes, sir. Uh, provision, Item Seven provides department heads and other non-litigious officials shall also have the option of meeting the budget reductions for the three unpaid furlough days approved as part of the FY two thousand and nineteen budget for their respective departments or offices through other alternative means, subject to approval of the Macon Bibb County Commission. Item Eight provides Macon Bibb County shall establish a furlough bank in which departments, offices that have excessive savings may make deposits for purposes of assisting other departments or offices in achieving their desired savings with a priority placed on public safety personnel.
A- and I understand that both of these revisions, though, are still subject to the savings cap built into the budget, is that right?
Yes, sir. Uh, the, uh, previous, uh, Section Six provides that, uh, uh, that, uh, the constitutional officers and lit- officials, uh, shall remain subject to meeting the budget reductions for three unpaid furlough days approved, approved as part of the FY two thousand days approved as part of the FY two thousand and nineteen budget for their respective offices.
Is there further discussion? Commissioner Allen, got your light on, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I wanna thank personally Mr. Watkins, Commissioner Watkins, Julie Moore, Keith Moffett, Dr. Moffett, they worked extremely hard. This is something I'm very passionate over. I think you need to treat everybody out of the same bowl, especially with pay. You don't leave somebody out just because they're an elected official or they're appointed. And I'm very proud of our colleagues for working on that and finally coming to a conclusion. And I hope this board supports this, and I feel that those appointed officials will be able to find it within their budget, so we can make sure that all employees are treated the same. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Allen. No further discussion. So what I'm assuming then is Commissioner Watkins wants to amend the resolution by adopting the floor substitute, to vote on the floor substitute. Is there objection to substituting the floor substitute that incorporates the revisions that Commissioner, is there objection to that?
Objection.
Sir?
Objection.
There is objection, therefore we'll have to have a vote then on using the floor substitute, adopting, I mean, using the floor substitute to vote on. I think I'm correct in doing this. So all in favor of using the floor substitute then would signify by saying aye, as opposed to the original resolution versus no? So all in favor of using the floor substitute signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no?
No.
Got two no's, so that's sixty-two, the ayes have it, so we are using the floor substitute. So now that the floor substitute, is there further discussion, or does anybody have any question about the floor substitute that we're voting on? Commissioner Wind, got your light on now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only concern I have over it is that when we start letting departments determine how they're gonna fund their employees, it starts getting a little bit out of whack, if you wanna call it that, that we had set aside so much money to be taken from each department, and then they start, with furlough days basically, but then they start trying to figure out how they're going to do it. I mean, if they have the money, and that's fine, and we can still reduce the budget by that amount, that's fine, but I just worry about what it'll cause in the future when we start letting departments make their decisions with how they work their funds. And at some point in time, those departments may not have those funds, but we may have to go back and truly rely on furlough days, but that's the only concern I have for it.
Thank you, Commissioner Wind. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Watkins?
I yield.
No further discussion then. All those in favor of the floor substitute signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no?
No.
One no?
No.
Two no's?
No.
Mr. Tillman, alright, so sixty-two, the floor substitute is adopted. That brings us then to item G, which is a grant from the Association of County Commissioners of Georgia for health and wellness, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to accept a health promotion and well-being grant from the ACCG Group Health Benefits Program in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye? Oppose, no? The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Item H is a revision to the intergovernmental agreement pertaining to the seven oh four fund and utilization for Safkey Industrial Park, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to execute an annulment and project approval for the intergovernmental agreement between the Macon-Bibb County Industrial Authority and the Macon Water Authority for the following seven oh four fund project, Safkey Industrial Park, and for other purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye? Oppose, no? The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Item I is a companion resolution, again dealing with the seven oh four fund and extending it as done by the legislature, by the Georgia Legislature, to extend the funding of the seven oh four by an additional twenty-five years. I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to execute the amendment to the tri-party agreement between the Macon-Bibb County Industrial Authority, the Macon Water Authority, and Macon-Bibb County, Georgia, for all seven oh four revolving fund projects and for other purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye? Oppose, no? The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Next is a resolution pertaining to Sunday voting, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission supporting the Macon-Bibb County Board of Elections' decision to allow Sunday voting and for other purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval, is there further discussion? Commissioner Wind, got your light on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I'm gonna be the honorary one tonight. I don't understand why we need one extra day, partial day for voting, when we've got three weeks of early voting, which includes a Saturday, and right now, at this very moment, you can call the Board of Elections tomorrow, I did it today, and ask for an absentee ballot. You can complete that absentee ballot in the comfort of your home, you can return it by fax or email, no charge. I don't see why, what extra, what one extra day is going to do to help that voting process. We have got enough days and enough ways. Why do we need an extra day? I just don't get it. Just tell me why we need an extra day. I know people are gonna say, well, people work seven days a week, seven to seven. There's your absentee ballot person that you need to go ahead and request it tomorrow. The Board of Elections will send you a copy. If you've got folks that need to vote by absentee, you can make a copy of that. She said I could make a hundred copies if I wanted to, and hand 'em out. They just have to look at the signatures to verify 'em. So I just don't understand it, and the cost that goes with it. Here we go again, spending more money than we don't have.
Thank you, Commissioner Wind. Mayor Protem Tillman, got your light on next, sir.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I really wonder where all of those folks that said earlier this year, we needed a full commission to be represented. I wonder where y'all are tonight?
Y'all are.
Wonder where y'all are. We have, when it comes to voting and election, we understand that so much has happened, especially in the state of Georgia. The Secretary of State's office, so much is going on in Washington DC with Title V, and I just can't fathom that we would spend thousands of dollars, that people said that we needed and we had to have it. And so again, I'm not sure that we even made the right decision back then, but I think today, the small decision of forty-five hundred dollars, we could make up, and maybe we'll lead the charge, and we'll go out and do some extraordinary things, have some bake sales, and things of that nature, to recover some of this funding, and I yield.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Tillman. Commissioner Wind, I've got your light on next, again.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry there's a confusion here over what a special election is and an extra day to vote. Special election was necessary. It was not something that I asked for, it just had to happen. It cost the county a good bit of money. I didn't cause that, it had to happen. It was necessary. Our district, you're confusing two different things, my fellow commissioner. This is not something that's the same, and you shouldn't be comparing them. That is not fair, not fair.
Thank you, Commissioner Wind. Commissioner Lucas, got you next.
Thank you. I wanna express appreciation to the members, the three members of our Board of Elections who heard our request and who voted in favor of the request to approve Sunday voting. There was one member who was back in the Stone Age and doesn't think anybody ought to vote, and that person, of course, cast that one vote against it, but I wanna express that. Also wanna express thank you to those who have co-sponsored this. This Sunday is gonna be a community-type thing, and we say that we are Christians, but it says somewhere, and these ministers gonna kill me, but faith without works is dead. It certainly is. And so after we go to church and we praise and we do all of this stuff, and then we sit up there and we go home and sit down, to me, you are wasting your faith. You need to show that you are truly Christian and that you are truly serving as an example for the community by, when you leave your church after praying and being all Christian inside of the walls, that you walk out, or march out, or get bust over to our Board of Elections and put your faith into action. This is not a black thing, this is not a white thing, this is a people thing, this is an American thing, and the thing that we need to be about, and the one thing that that one dissenting vote at the Board of Elections does not, she does not understand that her major responsibility is to facilitate voting. It is not to sit over there and depress or suppress voting. So I would encourage all of you to please vote and support the recommendation of our Board of Elections, who very wisely spent forty thousand dollars for a special election that only brought out eleven percent, but I don't care what the percentage is. If one person is allowed to vote, is given that privilege of voting, that is America, and we ought to provide every opportunity. One other thing, most of the major cities and some small places have Sunday voting, some of them have two. And every, don't, uh...
I'm sorry.
You're gonna gavel him for, he's speaking while I'm speaking?
I'm sorry.
And I'm trying to finish up so we can get out of here, but I just want to say, this Sunday voting is not about your personal political beliefs, it is about that first and utmost responsibility, and that is to ensure that people have a choice as to who represents them. And I would ask for your favorable vote on the Sunday voting and the other resolution which calls for the forty-five hundred dollar funding as opposed to the forty thousand dollar District One funding.
Thank you, Commissioner Lucas. Commissioner Schlesinger, got your light on next, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanna reiterate what Ms. Lucas just said. You know, this is a request that is coming from the Board of Elections itself, at least in majority, that we have a Sunday day of voting. You know, I think we wanna encourage people to vote, I think we wanna give them every opportunity to exercise that right. You know, whoever votes on that Sunday is gonna have to be a registered voter, I think we have to, you know, keep that in mind as well. And, you know, I think, you know, beyond this, you know, extra day, this Sunday, we as a commission really have to take a look at, you know, why we do not have a second polling place in place. We did, we don't anymore, I think we need one, but that's a, you know, separate issue that I think we are going to have to deal with going forward, but let's, you know, let's give everyone who's registered in this community the opportunity to cast that fundamental right of citizenship, and I don't think one Sunday is going to be something that's a negative in this community, I think it's a positive.
Thank you, Commissioner Schlesinger. Mayor Protem Tillman, got your light on next, sir.
Quickly, Mr. Mayor, if this passes, I would just challenge commissioners, let's all in our districts make sure that we're doing something to ensure that we help with this voting. Pastor Marvin Cobert, on the day before early voting, if this passes, which would be the twenty-eighth, that he and his church is committed, and District Nine, to have free fish, bake sales, and also offer people rights to depose on that Sunday. So Pastor Marvin Cobert at Bethel, so he's already sent the message and saying he's on board, so I would just challenge other commissioners, if this passes, to just make sure that we get folks out. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Commissioner Wind, got your light on again, and you have...
Mr. Mayor.
Additional comments?
Yeah, just one short comment, that I do encourage people to vote, I hope everyone goes out to vote. I hope this is the biggest voting percentage we've had in a long time, because yes, eleven percent is really sorry. So go out and vote, but I should caution you, don't all go out and vote on Sunday, because you need to bring your chairs and your bottles of water, because you're gonna have to sit and wait when everybody shows up at one time. And I know that's not a problem for some, but you could easily vote by absentee in the comfort of your home with no wait and no problem.
Thank you, Commissioner Wind. No further lights on, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye? Oppose, no? Got two no's, so sixty-two, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Item K, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, thank you. Item K is a supplemental appropriation of forty-five hundred dollars to cover the Sunday voting. I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to approve a supplemental appropriation for the transfer of four thousand five hundred dollars from fund balance in the FY nineteen budget to the Macon-Bibb County Board of Elections for the purpose of funding an additional day of advanced voting, to be referred to as Sunday voting, for the November sixth, two thousand and eighteen general election, and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval, is there further discussion? Commissioner Bibbins?
Just wanna call for the vote.
I don't think there's any objection at this point. Is there objection to calling for the vote? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye? Oppose, no? Got two no's again, sixty-two, the ayes have it, and the ordinance is adopted. Next is an ordinance to approve a supplemental transfer for the District Attorney's Office. I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to approve a supplemental appropriation for the transfer of twenty-seven thousand two hundred and forty-three dollars from fund balance in the FY nineteen budget to the District Attorney's Contract Labor Contractual Service Account to fulfill the spacer contract for FY two thousand and nineteen and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Thank you.
Oppose, no? The ayes have it, and the ordinance is adopted. Item M is an ordinance for emergency funding for replacement of the water heaters at the animal shelter, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to approve a supplemental appropriation for the transfer of fifteen thousand fifty dollars from fund balance in the FY nineteen budget to the Macon-Bibb County Animal Welfare Repairs and Maintenance Building Account for the purchase of two hot water heaters and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye? Oppose, no? The ayes have it, and the ordinance is adopted. Item N is a resolution to spend sploshed dollars for Musco lighting down at Central City Park. I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Musco Sports Lighting in the amount of four hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars for lighting to be installed at the Central City Park ball fields, to be paid by two thousand and seventeen splosh bond proceeds and our two thousand and eighteen splosh revenues and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval, is there further discussion? Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Item O is a companion resolution to pay for the installation of the lighting.
Resolution of the Maconville County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Middle Georgia Outdoor Lighting, Inc. in the amount of a hundred and eighty-eight thousand, six hundred dollars for services related to the installation of the Musco lighting equipment at Central City Park Baseball Fields, to be paid by the two thousand and seventeen splosh bond proceeds and/or two thousand and eighteen splosh revenues and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Item P is a resolution pertaining to an Eagle Scout project, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Maconville County Commission endorsing the Eagle Scout service project of Eagle Scout candidate Markeith Cornelius, and authorizing the placement of four benches to be located at the Fillmore Thomas Park Basketball Courts and for other lawful purposes.
The Economic and Community Development Committee recommends approval, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Next is a resolution granting a waiver for the demolition lien at five fifty-six Straight Street, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Maconville County Commission granting a conditional waiver and release of the demolition lien filed against that parcel of real property known as five five six Straight Street and for other lawful purposes.
The Facilities and Engineering Committee recommends approval, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Item R was a late addition, and it has to do with roof repairs at the auditorium, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Maconville County Commission to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with Edifice Consulting, Inc. in the amount of forty thousand dollars payable from two thousand and seventeen splosh bond funds and/or two thousand and eighteen splosh revenues, culture and public auditorium line item for professional design and project administration services related to the repair of the Macon City Auditorium roof and other purposes.
The Committee of the Whole recommends approval, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. That ends the old business and takes us into new business. There are a number of items of new business that I am going to read and refer to committee for further study and evaluation, beginning next Tuesday morning at nine o'clock a.m. in the committee meeting room. All are welcome to attend. Also want to urge you to review the agenda, which is published on Friday afternoon, for additional items that come down from the Attorney's Office during the week, and will also be included on the agenda for the committee's beginning next Tuesday. So check the agenda for the final, or check the agenda on Friday for the final version of things that have come down. As of right now, the first item is a resolution to authorize Parks and Beautification Department, Engineering Department, Historic Macon Foundation Incorporated, and Newtown Macon Incorporated to construct a pedestrian interchange connecting the west side of the Spring Street Bridge to the existing trail in Rosehill Cemetery. I'm gonna refer that to the Facilities and Engineering Committee. The next item is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a commercial lease contract with BSTP LLC in the amount of forty-five thousand dollars for office space located at one twenty-seven, one twenty-nine, and one forty-five First Street, to be occupied by the Georgia Cooperative Extension Services from October first, twenty eighteen to September thirty, twenty nineteen. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Item C, under new business, is a resolution to amend Resolution R eighteen, double oh fifty-four, creating the Health Care and Retirement Benefits Committee by expanding the committee membership to fifteen and increasing the number of commissioners appointed to serve on such committee to four. I'm gonna refer that to the Committee of the Whole. Item D is a resolution to appoint Mallory Jones and Valerie Wynn to serve on the Macon Bibb County Health Care and Retirement Benefits Committee. That's a companion resolution, I'm gonna refer that also to the Committee of the Whole. Item E is an ordinance approving and authorizing the appropriation of up to three hundred thousand dollars from twenty-seventeen splosh bond proceeds and/or twenty-eighteen splosh revenues from the twenty-eighteen Roads and Bridges Tucker Road Bridge Line item as shown on the twenty-eighteen splosh project timeline and budget. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Item F is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Musco Sports Lighting LLC in the amount of four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for lighting to be installed at the South Macon Bibb Recreation Center, to be paid by twenty-seventeen splosh bond proceeds and/or twenty-eighteen splosh revenues. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Item G is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Middle Georgia Outdoor Lighting, Inc. in the amount of a hundred and forty-three thousand, eight hundred dollars for services related to the installation of the Musco lighting equipment at the South Macon Bibb Recreation Center, to be paid by twenty-seventeen splosh proceeds and/or twenty-eighteen splosh revenues. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Item H is an ordinance to appropriate a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the twenty-eighteen Blight Bond, excuse me, Blight Bond Funds for the funding of the Macon Bibb County Land Bank Authority contractual obligation of an outstanding balance of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Item I is a resolution to approve the proposed fee schedule changes at Bowden Golf Course, as attached here too. I'm gonna refer that to the Facilities and Engineering Committee. Item J is a resolution to direct the mayor to sell the Little Richard House property located at four sixteen Craft Street. I'm gonna refer that to the Committee of the Whole. Item K is a resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to enter into new lease agreement with Coliseum Medical Center LLC for the lease of four hundred and twenty-five parking spaces located at the Macon Coliseum at fifteen dollars and fifty cents per month for a term of one year, for a total annual lease payment of seventy-nine thousand, fifty dollars, with nine annual renewals to indicate a three, I'm sorry, to include a three percent increase each year in rental rate, subject to a sixty-day notice by either party for non-renewal. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Item L is a resolution for a new rate structure for insurance premiums. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance. You're gonna be busy, you're gonna be busy, Jim Walker. Item M is a resolution to provide notice that Macon Bibb County may not include funding in the FY twenty-twenty budget for those outside organizations identified in Exhibit A. I'm gonna refer that to the Committee of the Whole. Item N is a resolution to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with Commercial Controls Group Incorporated for the installation of HVAC control system upgrades to the Division of Family and Children's Service Offices located at four fifty-six Overthorpe Street in the amount of a hundred and forty-four thousand, three hundred dollars payable from the Department of Family and Children Maintenance in lieu of rent funds. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee for further study and evaluation. That is the end of the new business currently that's been sent down by the Attorney's Office. You've been busy up there, Mr. Drake. But there may be additional items that'll come down for us. That brings us now to the point in the meeting where we have public comments on non-agenda items. These are people who've been patiently waiting to talk to us about items that were not on the agenda for discussion tonight, but who they want to bring to our attention. Is Linda Kay Nally here, Ms. Nally? Linda Kay Nally? She wanted to talk to us about integrity in government and the lack thereof. I'm sorry, Ms. Nally has had to leave and not with us tonight. Greg Williams, is Mr. Greg Williams still here with us? Mr. Williams wanted to talk to about, talk to us about building a greater city. Mr. Greg Williams. I'm sorry, he's not here either. Mr. Wade Horton wanted to talk to us about the transit authority. I don't see Mr. Wade Horton here. Is Mr. Wade Horton here? All right, I'm sorry. Mr. Mike Odom has been patiently waiting, wants to talk to us about property taxes, spending, and leadership. Mr. Odom, thank you very much for your patience. We apologize for the lateness of the hour. You are recognized, sir, for up to five minutes.
Okay, I didn't get to speak last time, so thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I hate to say it, but the ranker and accusations have continued tonight. At a previous commission meeting, one of the leaders up there tried to throw the mayor under the bus. The mayor replied, "You can call me stupid, don't call me crooked." That's kinda gonna be my theme tonight. Instead of stupid, I'm gonna say crook, incompetent, instead of dishonest, I'm gonna say Dennis dishonest instead of crooked.
Would you adjust that microphone just a little bit so we can all hear you?
Okay, is that better?
Yes, sir, that's much better.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Before I go any further, I'd like to talk about the generally accepted characteristics of a true leader. Emotional stability, accountability, honesty, integrity, commitment to all, ability to admit failure, willingness to try new ideas, and trustworthy. I have here a spreadsheet that was given to me by senior management in county government. It looks at three and a half years of spending and revenues, and during that three and a half years, sixty million dollars was drained out of the reserve fund. Interestingly, at the bottom left is handwritten, "What is the Problem?" And under it is handwritten, "Dire Projected Revenues." Nothing's ever questioned about spending. So, is that incompetent or dishonest? I don't know. By the way, dire was spelled D-Y-E-R, D-I-R-E is the proper spelling of that. Incompetent? Lack of good education? I don't know. But are we supposed to trust people who can't spell dire and they make recommendations? On three different occasions, I presented irrefutable evidence that you are not complying with the budget on spend, the charter on spending. You handed me a Bubba Reps letter that said justified your position. Other opinions supported mine that slammed the door, you didn't comply. It was very clear FY nineteen had a limit. You passed the budget. I've been told Macon Bibb leadership is operating in good faith, yet at every turn, your words proven to be false, inaccurate, and unreliable, incompetent, or dishonest. Property taxes have hit our homes. We were promised an increase of about a hundred dollars per hundred thousand dollar value. Property taxes have increased substantially more than one hundred dollars per hundred thousand dollar value. Incompetent or dishonest? My deceased-in-laws lived in a small house in a declining South Macon neighborhood. Burned out, abandoned, boarded up houses, gang signs, and routine gunfire is typical in that neighborhood. By the way, I've got pictures here of bullet holes in the back of their house. Their property taxes doubled. I said doubled. When I looked at it, the fair market value was increased fifty percent. Then the new mileage rate was applied. When I went to the appraiser's office, they said, "Well, we decided that that entire neighborhood, their property values had increased." They said that's called a neighborhood market value adjustment, a fifty percent increase in a depressed, declining, crime-ridden neighborhood. With a wave of the hand, they just said, "It's worth more." We never heard one of you say, "Oh, by the way, we may go around and make fair market increases in neighborhoods so we get even more property taxes slipped in through the back door." This neighborhood is Beddingfield Place and is located in District Two. I hear there are others that are experiencing the same thing. This doesn't pass the smell test. It appears likely that there was some coordination between Government Center and the appraiser. Why would you do that? This looks beyond incompetent, dishonest. You have to start thinking, is there corruption or collusion here? Are the Russians involved here somehow? I don't know. We have leaders up here that constantly denigrate other leaders, especially the new ones. Happened tonight several times. We have a leader who equates tenure with intelligence. That leader's not here, that leader left. Wish that leader could hear this. During this tenure of this commissioner, crime has soared, moral fabric has decayed, the finances of Macon Bibb are wrecked. This leader's tenure contains absolutely nothing to admit. A true leader would admit failure and also listen to new ideas. Incompetent, dishonest, I don't know. We have one favorite leader up here from me. Two times, this leader has come off the dais and insulted and threatened me in my, whispered in my ear. If you want to threaten me again, come down here and speak into this microphone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Odom. We appreciate your comments and appreciate your being here. Mr. Jake Pharoah is not here. Mr. Donald Richardson, who wants to share some grassroots reflections with us? As always, Mr. Richardson, we're delighted to see you up and about and glad you're here with us tonight.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor.
You're recognized for up to five minutes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Rickett. I would like to recommend to you the writings of Anthony Sarrow Sutton, who was born on February the fourteenth, nineteen twenty-five, and died on June the seventeenth, two thousand and two. He was a British and American economist, historian, and writer. After the rise of the new leadership in Atlanta, Georgia, and the New World Order during the nineteen ninety-six Atlanta World Olympics, the old black, white, and Jewish leadership that met in the smoke-filled boardrooms on the campus of Gammon Theological Seminary and Clark College campuses, revealed to me the stream of cosmic consciousness that's emanating from the fifty-mile radius between London and Amsterdam, which is the location of the holding companies of the Fortune Five Hundred corporations of the world. They told me that it was our moral obligations as African-American men, among the last of the baby boomers generation, who survived the psychological warfare that was inflicted upon us by the forces of evil during the nineteen ninety-six Atlanta Olympics, to block that polarization of life which to refine it during our lifetime, and then pass the torch to the next generation for higher standards of life. The writings of Anthony Sutton bears witness to that light, and some of the books that he wrote was called Western Technology and Soviet Economic Development, nineteen seventeen, nineteen thirteen, the same nineteen thirty, nineteen forty-five, the same nineteen forty-five, nineteen sixty-five. He wrote National Suicide, Military Aid to the Soviet Union, What is Libertarism, Wars and Revolution, Part One, eighteen twenty to nineteen hundred, Wars and Revolution, Part Two, nineteen hundred and nineteen seventy-two, Wall Street and the Bolshevik Revolution. Let's see what else that they listed he wrote. The Wall Street and the Rise of Hitler, the War on Gold, Energy that Created Crisis, The Diamond Connection, Trilaterals Over Washington, Gold Versus Paper, Investing in Platinum Metals, Technological Treason, A Catalog of U.S. Firms with Soviet Contracts, nineteen seventy-two to nineteen eighty-two, American Secret Establishment, Introduction to the Order of Skull and Bones, How the Order Controls Education, How the Order Create Wars and Revolution, The Best Enemy Money Can Buy, The Two Faces of George Bush, The Federal Reserve Conspiracy, Trilaterals Over America, Gold for Survival, Coal Fusion, Secret Energy, The View from Space. But I would recommend that book because the powers that be have always told me they have worked from this cosmic stream of conscience for which social, economic, political, the realities of the world works. And that nineteen ninety-six Olympics tried to put a lot of us down who was working with that, pulled the light, but it still shows that the cream still rise to the top, because they were telling us that they have always worked with this. the top because they were telling us that they have always worked with this, particularly in the founding of our black schools, the raise of a black leadership. So, um, if it had not been for that, I would have gone under psychologically, but it didn't because I'm still working from that, that process, and hopefully passing on to raise that level of thought back up.
Very good.
He talks about it in that book.
All right, sir. Thank, thank you very much, Mr. Richardson. Always appreciate your grassroots reflection, sir.
Oh, you're welcome.
Uh, finally, we got, uh, Mr. Stephen Williams, who's been waiting patiently, uh, uh, all, all evening, uh, wants to talk to us about changing and canceling the health insurance contracts. Uh, Mr. Williams? Thank you for your patience, uh, sir. We appreciate it, and you're recognized, uh, for up to five minutes, sir.
Well, thank you, and, uh, appreciate the, uh, opportunity to, uh, come to you and say hello and present some ideas. Um, again, my name is Stephen Williams. I'm with a group called, uh, CBA Advisors, representing a group called World Insurance. Uh, the reason why I'm coming here with you guys this evening is, is that I'm on a mission, on a process, on a way to help, uh, communities like yours solve the, um, healthcare challenges that you guys are all having. You guys have gone from, uh, sixteen million to twenty-two million in less than four years. It's a lot of money. When you guys are talking about having money that you need to pay for the needs of the community, that's where you're at. Um, you guys just had an RFP. Um, I've been on the communication level with you guys since June. Ms. Lucas asked me to come in and communicate with you this way. Uh, I've sent you guys all, uh, statements to identify that your current brokership with, uh, BBNT is wasting your time and your money. If I could get it, I know that, uh, it's possibly not something that you want to do, but those of you who are there in the room who are on the committee for the healthcare, if you could raise your hand? Nobody in the room, okay? Glad that you're adding a couple more folks to, uh, that, but the challenge is, is that there's a lot of healthcare illiteracy that all of you are working against. Your current broker is not that person at this point in time to help you guys. We've got experts that have cracked the code. We like to use a little image. We got, uh, Toto pulling the curtain away from the ahs. We know what the healthcare committees, what the healthcare community is doing and charging extra funds. You seriously need to look at someone outside of the status quo. The individual that you guys have is, hey, he's a great guy. I'm a great guy. You're all great guys and gals. The challenge is with that great guy, the work is not getting done. Your money is going out the window. I came to the mayor the other day at the, uh, Tuesday's meeting last week and described that there was a conversation about a hundred thousand dollars. My services, our solutions, our way of doing things, I already know I got a million dollars sitting in the bank for you if you just step into the box. The challenge is, is that the fear, the non-understanding of healthcare can't continue. My job within the mission with my group is to help the city governments, the county governments, because you're the hardest folks to get on board. The private sector is moving, but the city government is not moving. You guys put out a bid asking individuals to come and, and, uh, present. We won't present. I apologize if I'm being out of order with that, but I want you guys to have the information so that you understand where it's at. In the section, page four of your RFP, it identifies in yellow and describes why you're not winning in healthcare. Because there is no plan. There is no plan by BBNT for you guys to save money, to get your employees healthy, and not have the overspend that you're having. I ask for an opportunity to be able to present to you the solutions that will make a difference. Our solutions are true, they will work, they will make a difference. You guys all received the email from me allowing you to be able to download a free book about the opioid crisis. If you haven't taken advantage of it, take advantage of it. It will help you understand more to what we're trying to get you to learn and help your employees and help your community.
Thank you very much, Mr. Williams. We, we appreciate your patience, appreciate your being here, appreciate the information. Um, we have one point of personal privilege, Commissioner Schlesinger, let me recognize you. That's all the people that wanted to talk to us tonight about non-agenda items, so recognize you for a point of personal privilege, sir.
Uh, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I don't want to, I'd like to get the idea that I'm violating any, uh, privacy, uh, rights here because Ms. Lucas asked me to, uh, just share this with you. But, uh, she left early because her husband, Senator David Lucas, had bypass surgery, um, today and is, from all reports, is doing, uh, well after the, uh, surgery. So, um, let's all just, uh, keep Senator Lucas and the entire Lucas family in our prayers, uh, tonight and throughout the week and the weekend.
Good. Thank you. I, I appreciate you bringing that. Is there any other point of personal privilege? Uh, there being none, uh, we have reached the end of our agenda. Uh, can I get a motion to adjourn? A motion and second without objection? We are adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.